The recording has stopped. This meeting is being recorded.
Are we ready to go? Welcome, everybody. Sorry for the delay to the Thursday, July 1st, 2021, meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. And as usual, in accordance with executive order N-29-20, the Planning Commission meeting is being held virtually. Please go to the county website. You can get information to join us either by phone or by computer. And with that, I will call the meeting to order and ask everybody to join me in a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Laura, roll call vote, or roll call, please.
Alan Bongio.
Here.
Thomas Mulder.
Here.
Noah Levy.
Here.
Mike Newman.
Here.
Peggy O'Neil.
Here.
Brian Mitchell.
Present.
Melanie McAver.
Here. Wonderful.
Welcome all. Looks like we have a full commission. This is great. All right. With that, Director, do we have any agenda modifications?
We do not have any modifications to the agenda this evening. There are a number of supplementals that have been forwarded to you. In fact, there's a lot of supplementals that have been forwarded to you on many items. I don't have them all in front of me, otherwise I'd go through them.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, we will go to public comment. This is a time when anybody can speak on any item they wish to that is not on tonight's agenda. So let's see. Let me get to participants. Sorry, it's different than mine. So attendees. Tanya Horlick, go ahead.
Thank you. And I want to clarify, I'm not sure if this is the right time to comment on PLN 2020-166.
No, that's on the agenda tonight, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on public comment on any item that is not on tonight's agenda? Go ahead, Austin Therold. I'm not sure if I pronounced that right.
I'm here. Can you hear me off?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, I'm an environmental scientist. I've worked on many projects in Humboldt County and got to meet hundreds of people that live in this county. I just wanted to express my gratitude and thank you for what you guys do, because our county really depends on it financially and to support the special community that we have here. I just wanted to give a positive public comment to support what you guys do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's appreciated. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on public comment?
What?
Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment. And we are now going to go through the consent agenda, and I will go through each item like I do every two weeks. And if anybody has a concern, raise your hand, and we will pull that item. If not, it'll stay on consent. So the first item is the Badger Gita Grounds LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Neyland area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this item pulled? I see a hand, so item will be pulled. Item number two is the Shamice Creek Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Palo Verde area. Does anybody wish to have this one pulled? I see a hand up, but it's the same hand that was up on the last one. I don't. So is there anybody that wishes to have this one? Okay, that hand came back up. So that item will be pulled. So item number three, Sunhouse Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit in the New Harris area. Anybody wish to have this one pulled? It looks like the same caller's pulling them all. Okay. Item number four, Rockway Investments LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Bridgeville area. Anybody who has concern with this one? Seeing none, we'll leave that on consent. Item number five, which is already to be continued to a date uncertain, so we'll skip over that one. And our last item on consent is item number six, which is Bosom 4373 LLC Conditional Use Permit in the McKinleyville area. Is there anybody who has concerns with this one? Seeing none, we will leave that item on consent. So we will have two items, I believe, on consent, or three with the one that's being moved. So items number four, five, and six will be our items on the consent calendar.
Mr. Chairman, I move items four, five, and six on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Brian. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Melanie was the second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Laura, roll call vote, please.
Alan Bongio.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Affirmative.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Melanie McAver.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Laura. Okay, so the first item that was pulled from consent we will look at is Badger Gita Grounds LLC Conditional Use Permit, Neyland area. And take a staff report on that. Staff report?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to share my screen here.
Okay. Just making sure that there was somebody on it.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No problem.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Megan Ossobato, and I'm the planner for Badger Gita Grounds LLC. Badger Gita Grounds is applying for a conditional use permit for their project located in the Neyland area.
Megan, I don't think, I don't think we can see your screen. I know I can't.
Okay, sorry. Can you see it now?
No, we see you.
No. Okay. There we go. Is it still me?
Nope. Now it's the project.
Okay. And you see the project location?
Um, no.
No. Let me try that one.
Now we see a rice paddy in.
Okay. Hold on, my apologies. One more time.
I was going to say, that didn't look like Humboldt County.
I don't think we grow that here.
Yeah.
Give me just a second. My apologies. Usually it's not so difficult.
Megan, we did see your presentation previously, although it hadn't started. It was kind of like the, you know, the work, the working.
It was the preview.
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. So I just need to share the right screen. Sorry about that. There we go.
There we go.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll go back to the last slide. Well, this is the project area. Badger Gita Grounds is located in the Neyland area, just southeast of Neyland. And the parcel is comprised of two APNs that are one legal parcel. Parcel size is 141 acres, zoned timberland production zone, and land use designation is timberland. The applicant is applying for one acre of existing outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation with 4,356 square feet of ancillary propagation space. 28,000 square feet of that will be light deprivation greenhouses with no use of lights or generators, and 15,560 square feet of that will be full sun outdoor. Water is currently sourced by a permitted well, and the applicant is proposing a 500,000 gallon rainwater catchment pond. Yearly water usage is about 350,000 gallons per year, which is 8.03 gallons per square foot per year. Power is currently sourced by generators on site, and the applicant plans to transition to 80% solar within three years from the date of approval. 27,500 gallons of existing water storage exists on site. And drying, curing, and trimming is proposed within a processing building shown here in the orange box. Ancillary propagation is shown in purple. Light deprivation greenhouses are shown in green. Full sun outdoor cultivation areas are shown in yellow. Water storage is shown in a light blue, and this here is the proposed pond. And this is the location of the well. And generator locations are shown in a red starburst. Recommendation is to find the project consistent with the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration that was prepared for the Commercial Medical Marijuana Land Use Ordinance. Make all required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and to adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit subject to conditions of approval. And that's the end of my presentation, and myself and staff are available for questions.
Thank you, Megan. Does anybody have, on the commission, have any questions? Seeing none, we'll let you go for now, Megan. If you can minimize your screen so I can see where the participants are, and I will open it up for public comment. Okay, so I'm going to open up public comment at this time, and it looks like we have one hand up, and it is Tanya Horlick. Go ahead.
Thank you, esteemed Commissioners and the Planner for your work. I have a question. My question is, how Humboldt County is assessing its groundwater resources? How are you measuring what water is available before you authorize a new well? That is my question.
Okay. We have another caller. We'll take these calls and then let the staff address those. The second caller is Public 7108. Go ahead.
Hi. Yes, I have a couple concerns about this. The first one is the water that they're projecting 350,000 gallons for this acre growth, but they only have 27,500 gallons in hard tanks. They're planning to do a rainwater catchment plan, but that's not there. So and drawing 350,000 gallons out of a well. We are in this drought, and where the water table is in these aquifers, I think is pretty unknown. Anyway, that's a concern. And then it's going to be full processing on site, and that's all going to happen with their onsite generators. So installing a solar array within three years, long time down the line, so this comes across as a generator growth. And multiple concerns about the generators, and one of them is running them with 100 degrees or 120 outside in this drought. Okay, that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next caller is Public 7429. Star 6, unmute yourself.
Hi. Good evening. I won't spend a lot of time. I basically have the same concern as this caller with the well and the generators, and I suggest that this application, since it's like to grow so much, up to this acre, that part of the condition of the permit be that the rainwater catchment pond is in place with water in it, and the solar array is installed, so we can avoid all the problems of possible fire with generator and overdrawing our groundwater. So there's something you can do about this, and that would just be to have those conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments on this project? Seeing none, I will close the public comment, and I'll bring it back to the commission. Or, yeah, I'll bring it back to the commission, let the staff, if they want to address any of those questions that were brought up.
I can address, sorry, the question about the well and how we determined it to be groundwater. The well completion report shows that the first step to water is 160 feet depth, and the well is screened at 220 feet, which has basalt with quartz. And just with that information, we.
Megan, can you repeat the last part of that? You kind of broke up there at the end.
Oh, sorry about that. So the well is screened at 220 feet, and at 200 feet, it's basalt And at 200 feet, it's basalt with quartz. Is the rock type. So, with the depth of the well where it's screened and the type of rock, we've determined that it's, uh, it's a groundwater well.
So Megan, I'm gonna ask you a question, what's the relationship between the rainwater catchment and the well?
So the applicant is proposing a rainwater catchment, um, so he has two years to install the rainwater catchment. He's trying to supplement, um, water, you know, for irrigation from the well. Trying to move away from using the well. Also, uh, in the well completion report, I'm seeing a yield of three gallons per minute, which is kind of low. So I think for the applicant, he's also trying to be environmentally conscious by proposing the well, and also to provide adequate source of water.
One, one of the things, uh, um, one of the things I wanted to just add to that for the commission's benefit is that this is an existing operation, and the well is permitted, uh, through the Health Department. So this, this operation i- is actually, um, it's operating right now under an interim permit. So, this entitlement that, that is in front of you is needed for them to be authorized to construct the rainwater catchment pond.
Anything else?
Yeah, just to add in, so in line with what Cliff is saying, the two years relates to something the ordinance allows for, which is to approve things under what's called a provisional permit. They have one year to submit the plans for approval to the county, and then they have an additional year to finish construction of those, uh, improvements. And, and so I think that's why it's, it's important that there is those timeframes in there that is consistent with the ordinance. I know the, uh, public had asked to have everything installed upfront before cultivation began, but as Mr. Johnson mentioned, the cultivation is already ongoing. This is a, what's called existing cultivation, so the permit is provisional, allowing the applicant to have time to come into compliance.
Thank you, staff. So now I'll bring this back to the commission, and I see Brian has his hand up already, so go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask a question of the applicant. If we were to hypothetically, uh, require an additional set of c- conditions, one of which is that the rainwater catchment be installed prior to beginning the 2022 growing season, and number two, that either the offsite, uh, processing of the product be done, or the generators be brought inside of, uh, small sheds or buildings? If either of those two would work for the applicant?
Okay, I don't know if the applicant with us, but...
Um, I can at least, uh, respond to the generators that actually are already housed in sheds. Um, there are three generators onsite housed within two sheds, and the applicant is conditioned to get those permitted, uh, with a concrete floor, um, to prevent spill, et cetera.
Then, Mr. Chairman, I, I would love to move forward a motion, uh, with the added condition of requiring the rainwater catchment by the beginning of the 2022 growing season.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have anybody that wishes to second that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second, any further discussion on it? Ask Laura for a roll call vote.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder? Thomas Mulder? Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Uh, no, without amendment.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Ryan Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McGaver?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
He must've dropped off, so...
Five to one.
Huh? Five to one, yeah, yeah, no, no problem. So, motion carries five to one, thank you.
Okay, so, the next item was item number two. Shemice Creek Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Palo Verde area, and I'd ask for a staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Bongio. My name is Alec Barton, I'm a contract planner with Harrison Associates, working with Humboldt County, and this application is for Shemice Creek Farms, located off of Shemice Loop Road in the Palo Verde area. The zoning for this parcel is forestry recreation, and the land use designation is residential agriculture. It's a 40-acre parcel. The applicant seeks a conditional use permit for 2800 square feet of existing outdoor cultivation. Plants are propagated in a 2,280 square foot nursery. There are two onstring rainwater catchment ponds that provide, uh, water, irrigation water to the site, and the total 560,000 gallons. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife determined that the ponds are considered onstring reservoirs, and therefore require permits from the State Water Resources Control Board. Um, the applicant's agent informed me this afternoon that those permits have been acquired and will be provided to Humboldt County as part of the postapproval process. The applicant uses 342,000 gallons of water, which equates to about 15 gallons per square foot for this project. And there's a total of 715,500 gallons of water storage in the two ponds, three ladders, and two storage tanks. The primary source of power is a solar array with two generators. Here's a map depicting where cultivation occurs onsite. Um, there are three cultivation areas, and a 500,000 gallon pond that's located between cultivation area one and three, as well as a 60,000 gallon pond in another portion of the parcel. Several corrective actions were identified in the site management plan, and these include installing a rolling, uh, and rock dips on the main access road and some spur roads, applying seed and mulch to exposed soils, and installing an approved septic system. In the lake and stream bed alteration agreement, um, the application is required to measure the flow of diversion from the ponds, replace the spillway at point of diversion three, and replace the culvert. The, uh, road evaluation included recommendations related to improving access to the site. And then the timberland conversion mitigation evaluation included corrective actions at 33 different locations on the site. And these involve such things as main, general maintenance of roads, cleaning of debris, and then, um, planting and reseeding exposed soils. We've included, uh, a condition related to the use of generators that would require the applicant to cease use of generators by January 1, 2026. And then there are standard conditions pertaining to roads and the inadvertent discovery protocol. After analyzing all of the documentation for this project, staff has found that the project is consistent with the impacts identified and adequately mitigated in the original mitigated negative declaration. The project as conditioned would result in no significant adverse environmental effects beyond those identified in the MND. And so it is the recommendation of staff that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to approve, uh, Shemice Creek, uh, the continued cultivation of 22,800 square feet of outdoor cannabis cultivation at this site. Thank you.
Any questions for staff from the commission?
I was just wondering why we chose, uh, 2025 to end the generator use, that seems like quite a ways out.
Would you like to answer that, Alec, or?
I'll, I'll answer that, that, that is a, a date that's been used before, that the commission has imposed. Um, so, we are attempting to be consistent with past actions.
Any other questions for staff before I open this up for public comment? Seeing none, I will open up the public comment, and let me get to my participants. All right. So public comment is open. Try to keep it to three minutes. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Somebody pulled this? Ah, there's 7108, go ahead.
Yeah, um, thank you for letting me ask these questions. So this is for 22,800 square feet of existing outdoor, and another 2,280 square feet of ancillary nursery. And is that nursery square footage contained within the 20, 22,800? So that was the question. And, uh, when I looked at it, it said the primary electrical source is, uh, for outdoor cultivation is the solar array and several generators. So, I guess now, uh, it's two generators. My concern about the generators is, uh, using them when we're in this extreme drought, and, uh, it's very dry and hot, and, um, the thing of waiting until 20, January 2026, it's like conditions have changed, and I feel like this drought and the risk and the danger of having all these generators running out in the hills, uh, I, you need to shorten that time. That's just, I need a long time to, uh, put everybody at risk. And all the people that I live around are really concerned about, uh, all these generators and the risks of fire. So, um, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie. Uh, next public speaker is 9831. Star six, unmute yourself.
Hello, this is Holly Carter, I'm calling in from Redway, and, um, I just wanted to appreciate all the concerns that are going on environmentally, and also speak to the practicalities of that. I'm not aware of this project or anything, but I'm hearing the concerns about transitioning from wells to ponds and timelines for generators and things like that, and that, um, especially for existing operators. I would just like the commission to keep in mind that it takes time, and it also takes permitting through the county to get a lot of these things done. Um, that last project and this project may not be able to complete those timelines if you're not considering the adequacy, you know, giving enough lead time for someone to achieve a, a permit, which can take some time through the county, and find operators, and do the work in reasonable timeframes within the, the seasons here. You can't necessarily like dig a pond or build a building at certain times of year based on the ground, and if you have to do any kind of extra mitigation. So I just wanna encourage the commission to keep that in mind anytime you're placing conditions on people. And especially when they have to do with ground impact, anything that would take a permit. Definitely, um, concerned about a lot of the same things that the callers previous have, are concerned about, fire, drought, you know, um, i- impacts on neighborhoods. And I'm concerned about timelines being put in place that are unachievable, which just makes i- i- it's a cascade of issues for the operator, for the commission, not necessarily the commission, but for the department, for sure. Ends up being a lot more paperwork to achieve the same thing when we could have a little breathing room and put in, um, reasonable, I guess, expectations, and and anticipate that people will act in the best interest of themselves and their community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next caller is Carmen Gonzalez. Star six, unmute.
Seeker requires that conditions and mitigations attached to programs must be enforceable, and when the evidence shows they are not practical to enforce, that the county may no longer rely on those mitigations to reduce impacts. Among other things, the noise and light mitigations meant to protect sensitive wildlife are totally unenforceable. Sensitive wildlife include birds, bats, mammals, insects, including species listed under the Federal Endangered Species Act such as northern spotted owl. Humboldt County does not possess the necessary federal take permit, nor has the county consulted with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. As a result, illegal take of protected species is likely occurring throughout Humboldt County. Therefore, the county must stop approving these projects or modify them so that noise and light from generators and supplemental lighting are no longer authorized to exist at all. This is even more important after a report to the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday this week by county code enforcement staff, where it was clearly demonstrated that the county cannot actually enforce permit conditions or mitigations on cannabis permits. There are simply too many grows scattered throughout remote areas of the county and too few enforcement staff. It is an impossible task. As courts have said, mitigations cannot be simply expressions of hope.
Okay, are you done?
I have a question, I have a question on something like that, sounds like it was a recording, is that permitted?
I was gonna give her three minutes, no ma- whether it's a recording or not, I don't know. That's a good question, Director, you have any thoughts on that?
Because in, in, in the chambers, would somebody would bring a recorder up to it, would that be acceptable?
I feel like she was using one of those, um, software programs where you have the text, and you can choose what voice you want to read it.
Okay. You might be right.
But I don't know, I don't know.
She was gonna get three minutes in my, one way or the other, so... I'm not sure the answer to that, Mike, to be honest, I...
I, I think we should research that a little bit for future and for coming up with in-person meetings.
Okay. That's the director knew that. Uh, next caller is Public 7429. Star six, unmute, please.
Um, hi, I, I wanted to add, uh, a thought to this, that what the applicant can do is to start smaller so that it won't be such a burden to have to add so much. So if you, if you are trying to do an acre and you can't get enough water and you can't get enough power, start with 10,000 square feet and work up. So as you, as you grow, you grow your re- your resources. And, um, rather than approaching it that it's a burden on them. And I just, I think that, um, Commissioner Melanie is probably correct on that voice thing, because the way it's set up now, um, the only way that you get anywhere with neighbors that are violating the rules, because as she mentioned, the code enforcement is not able to catch up with that, is for neighbors to turn their neighbors in, and it leaves people in a really vulnerable place, 'cause people are quite dependent on their income, and when you start interfering with that, you, you put yourself in a vulnerable place. And I don't think all, um, applicants would, would stoop to, um, something dangerous, but I do think that people are nervous about that, so, um, it's just something to, that is going on, so, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on public comment? Go ahead, Praj White.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Hi, Praj.
Good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to touch base on a clarity, I had listened to the presentation. and eighty is in addition to that onsite. And, you know, when we're talking about power, the applicant already uses solar for the residential components of this project. They are comfortable with the commitment here on five years on getting off of the generator and moving to solar. I heard the concerns from the commission and Mr. Ford's comment about the five-year date. I think that is a very reasonable date for the applicant to be able to transition completely over. However, I did speak with the applicant regarding this issue today and they would be willing and believe that, you know, by the end of 2024 would be reasonable to accomplish. So they're willing to move that up one year if that was in the commission's interest. I'm here and available for further questions if there are any more. That's all I had to add. I felt all the rest of the comments were in generalization to the county and not specific on the project. Thank you very much.
I just saw Thomas Mulder's name come up on the screen, but I don't know.
Did he just?
I raised my hand so I'd be let back in.
Okay. You with us now, Thomas?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. All right. Good. So with that, Director, was there anything you wanted to add to the comments before I close public comment?
I think the general lies, the comments that Mr. White had mentioned is that I don't recall ever giving a report to the board that we're not able to enforce our conditions. And I don't recall ever giving a report that code enforcement is not actively engaged in enforcing illegal cultivation. I think those are the only things I would respond to.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, I'm gonna close the public comment and I'm gonna bring it back to the commission. I see two hands up already, so I'm not sure who was first, but I'm gonna go Brian Mitchell first and then Mike Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt all of the items in the staff recommendation with two modifications. Number one, it's that all generators be in an enclosed area with a spill proof concrete or other impermeable floor. And number two, that the date be moved from January one, 2026, to December thirty first, 2024.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Anybody here to second that motion? See, there's hands up, so we'll get some time for discussion as well. Somebody wants to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second. That would be in the second. And I would ask for further discussion on the motion because I see Mike and Thomas both have their hand up. So Mike, go ahead.
So, let me, yeah, I'm, okay, I'm unmuted. Okay. So my question, I have two questions. One is, in the report, I think it says not allowed beyond December thirty one, 2025. And we're just moving it up one year, not December thirty one, 2026, as the motion says. So we might want to amend that just to clean up, that's all. The main thing that I was raising my hand about was about the comment, public comment about the complaint-driven procedure here and neighbors being afraid of repercussions. I would like to ask the Director thoughts about that and what has actually been encountered or reported.
So we do get complaints on approved sites. And complaints, when they're received, are completely confidential. We do not identify who has made the complaint. It's just like code enforcement. We don't release that information. We can protect it and we do. When we contact the applicant, the first thing we do is verify whether or not there is a violation. You know, we can't go with the assumption that there is. Sometimes we're given pictures where it's pretty evident that there are violations and then we go out and confirm it ourselves and then work with the applicant to address that violation. I'm not aware that anybody that has reported anything to the planning and building department has had retribution against them. That hasn't been made known to me. I know that there is concern by people not wanting to enforce against their neighbors, both from a code enforcement standpoint and from the standpoint of enforcing against permit conditions. But, I mean, the other thing I would add is that we do inspect these sites also. Thank you, Director. That's what I wanted to get out in the public there and hear exactly what is going on there. So misconceptions can be taken into account. Thank you.
Thomas Mulder, I see you had your hand up.
Well, I'm just curious, and maybe I understand the rules differently. I thought all generators had to be enclosures or is that just, I mean, to get the fifty decibels or sixty decibels? I mean, I thought they kind of needed to be at enclosures. I support adding that language in there and also with the secondary containment, if they're enrolled in the COOPA plan of Humboldt County, that's kind of, but it's good. I agree with the added conditions, although those rules should technically apply, I believe, but maybe I'm wrong.
I would say, Commissioner Mulder, you are correct on all points. It is a little bit duplicative, but clarity is never a bad thing.
Thank you, Director. Any other questions?
I have one.
Go ahead, Peggy.
This is just in follow-up to Mike's question. Has there been an analysis done on the number of code enforcers or employees you need per, you know, growth sites that we are approving to ensure that, you know, you stay up to speed with the staffing that you need?
Yes, we are looking at that. And as we've got approximately thirteen hundred sites to look at right now, we do have a plan to make sure each site gets touched every year. We have allocated more staff this year to that effort. We have developed a protocol for how we inspect and where we inspect so that we minimize drive time and we hit as many sites when we're out there as possible. For instance, I think one employee hit fifteen sites one day this week. Now, admittedly, eight permits were on one of the sites. But, I mean, to be able to be that efficient is quite an achievement that we're proud of. The thing that we're looking at is as we continue to issue permits, we're going to increasingly go from focusing on issuing permits then to inspections. And so we do recognize that that's part of the transition of this process.
Thank you, Director. Brian, I see you have your hand, is that back up or is it still up from before?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to clarify a couple of the points that have been made by the commissioners. Number one, I would, I guess, correct or restate my motion. I believe I have correct that the staff report states January one, 2026, and I still want to move it to December thirty first, 2024. So three hundred and sixty-six days of moving that up, as I stated in my motion. Number two, I think based on the public testimony, that just because there are other rules and regulations that an applicant has to follow in the process and people who are in the industry might know that, based on the public comment, the public's not sure of that. So putting the additional requirements on the generators is for the clarity of the public in attendance to this meeting, those who commented. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. So Noah, are you okay with clarification? And that Brian gave?
I am okay with that, with that clarification of the motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on it? Seeing none, I will ask Laura for a roll call vote then.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Motion carries unanimous. Right. Move on to item number three, Sunhouse Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit in the New Harris area. And we'll take a staff report, please.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. Can everyone see my screen all right?
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sarah Farola. I am a contract planner with Harrison Associates for the Humboldt County Planning Commission. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting on Sunhouse Farms, which is project number one two oh two nine, Conditional Use Permit. The property is located in the New Harris area. It is zoned forestry recreation and special building site. Land use is residential agriculture and it is forty-six and a half acres. There is one class three stream within the project area as well as four ponds for fire suppression. The scope of work for this conditional use permit is to permit a maximum of an acre of outdoor cultivation. There is an existing developed cultivation area of thirty-nine thousand four hundred ninety-eight square feet located within twenty-three greenhouses and they're in seven garden areas. Propagation occurs in two greenhouses that total four thousand two hundred and ninety-two square feet. And the project is currently under a temporary cultivation reduction of twenty thousand square feet for just the remainder of 2021. The irrigation source for the project is a surface water diversion. It's permitted and water use is approximately four hundred and fifty thousand gallons per year. Current onsite water storage includes two hundred and fifty-six thousand gallons within forty-three hard tanks as well as one fifty thousand gallon water bag that is planned to be removed this year. There is rainwater catchment development on two roof surfaces with an additional surface planned as well as fifty additional hard tanks that will increase the total onsite water storage to about four hundred and forty-six thousand gallons. Power for the project is provided by three onsite generators within secondary containment and partial solar is proposed. This is a site map of the project. There's a bit of text, so I kept the arrows to a minimum. The green squares are the seven garden areas I mentioned, which have the twenty-three greenhouses within them. And the blue circles are the fire suppression ponds as well as the waterway. The site plan was created by Finley and Friends. So there is a project-specific consideration. The applicant has applied for a streamside management area setback reduction permit to perform cultivation activities within the hundred-foot buffer area for the streamside management buffer zone. The reduction permit is requested based on site visits by the applicant's agent and other consultants, which determined that this area was the most suitable. That wouldn't result in any trees being cut down and it's within the hundred-foot buffer zone. And the cultivation area has been set back approximately thirty feet from the waterway. And to establish best management practices and mitigation for this streamside management area setback reduction, a disturbed area stabilization plan has been prepared by a licensed professional geologist. It establishes BMPs that the applicant will implement to minimize sediment discharge to, within the streamside management area. The applicant has already installed a blue rock barrier that surrounds the cultivation area at this site in order to minimize any irrigation-related runoff and identify if any erosion is taking place in order to identify if additional measures need to be applied or reconfigured. Amendments. So after the publication of the agenda for this meeting, the applicant indicated that they would be interested in making the following revisions to two conditions of approval. The first is condition nineteen, which the applicant would like to request that the standard generator condition that has been applied to the project be revised. They would like to develop a partial solar ray system on the property to power the project during peak draw times and to have the generators continue to be used for backup power. They would also like to propose a permanent storage shed to house the generator within two years of permit approval. And the second amendment is to condition twelve, that the removal of the water bladder and relocation of water tanks be extended from two years to four years to give a bit more time for this relocation. The conditions of approval included with this project include waste to get a permit for the septic system, for water to install a water monitoring flow meter on the surface water diversion, and to add additional storage. The corrective actions were identified in the site management plan and need to be completed within six months of permit approval. The cultural resources include the mitigation measures identified in the investigation as well as the inadvertent discoveries protocol and access. So the California Environmental Quality Act, an addendum, was prepared in June, 2021. And after analyzing all available documentation for this project, staff has determined that the project is consistent with impacts identified and adequately mitigated in the original mitigated negative deck. So as the project as condition results in no significant adverse environmental effects. The staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution to approve the permit for the current cultivation of forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet of outdoor cannabis cultivation and the associated four thousand two hundred and ninety-two square feet of propagation area. And subject to the recommended conditions of approval. I'd be happy to take any questions at the commission or public.
Mike, I see you have your hand up. Question for Sarah.
Yes. She had mentioned a couple of changes on the recommendations on number nineteen and one other one. I wasn't fast enough in looking them up and making amendments in my notes here. So it was number nineteen, the generator use to cease by when?
It wasn't a change in the ceasing. It was just a bit of a change in the language to allow it to be retained for the backup use and not be completely off generator use. And the applicant is also on to provide any additional details with that, but they just want to keep it for backup use and not do a complete transfer over. And they have additional reasons for that, that they're able to explain if necessary.
And that's not in the recommended commission actions that I see, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And what was the other one?
The other one was condition twelve, to have an extended amount of time to relocate the water tanks. to relocate the water tanks from two years to four years.
And that was because of what?
That was just because it was cost prohibitive to do in that amount of time with other items on the applicant's agenda, essentially.
If I could add to that in terms of staff's recommendation, there's obviously not a problem using the generators as a backup converting to solar. That's pretty consistently done. So that's supportable. But the request for the bladders, we've routinely consistently recommended and conditioned that the bladders be removed within the two-year period.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to make sure about that. That's what I thought. So I just wanted to point that out, make sure. Thank you.
Brian, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we find the commission as considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the commercial medical land use ordinance as described in section 15164 of the state secret guidelines, that we make the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and that we approve the Sun House Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions with the following modifications. I'd like to adjust to condition nineteen such that it will be completed no later than December 31, 2024, and allow them to continue to use the generators for emergency backup purposes. And no modification to number twelve.
I love your eagerness, Brian, but I still have to open this up for public comment. So we're going to have to come back for the motion, and I need to open this up for public comment, okay? So is there any other questions for Sarah at this time? That's what we were doing, and then I'm going to open up public comment. So if there's no other questions, I will go to public comment and open that up now. And it looks like we have three commenters. The first is public 3776.
Hello. I hope everyone can hear me, okay?
Yes.
My name is Jasmine, and I'm the agent on this farm. I am also the owner's younger sister. I would like to add some caveats to what was said by Sarah about condition nineteen, and that was that we were not hoping to have the generator removed any quicker than the deadline. In fact, the deadline for removal of the generator seems quite steep, given the other property improvements that are going to be needed here. We were asking for some I've been unable to get exact clarification on the wording of condition nineteen and what having a primary source other than a generator means. And what we were trying to propose was having solar power to produce upwards of fifty percent of the power needed for the operation, but then also still be able to utilize a generator. It's going to be difficult to establish enough solar very quickly to run the full operation during peak power time, and it might be feasible to operate with solar most of the time, but certain times it might not. This farmer fears that this condition may eventually end up putting them out of business as their farm is located very rurally, and the nearest power pole is quite far from the property. So establishing PG&E would be quite challenging. And also establishing solar capable of providing full power for the total operation within a short period of time, in particular while trying to accomplish other property infrastructure improvements, may become difficult. If anything, we would request an extension on the deadline for generator removal or generator use removal. I also would additionally like to request that there be an updated update to condition twenty-one to clarify exactly what road intersection the county is asking this applicant to potentially upgrade. Right now, that condition as written states that the applicant will comply with visibility ordinance rules for all, and let me start that over. The condition states that the applicant shall maintain all county roads in accordance with the site visibility ordinance. The applicant is happy to maintain the intersection of the road, a private road, an island mountain road, a county road, with those visibility ordinance rules. However, as worded now, it seems very open-ended, and so we request clarification of exactly what will be required there. In addition, I'd like to say a little more about the water tank section, which is condition twelve. And I'd like to call attention to the fact that this farmer has reduced cultivation size by over half this year. Accordingly, their water storage is currently right about at half of what they estimate their total use to be. Removal of the water bag within a two-year period should not be a problem, but we don't want to lock ourselves into a schedule of needing to place fifty new five-thousand-gallon water tanks that come in at approximate cost of three thousand, two hundred and ten dollars each within this two-year period. Removal of the water bag is not an issue. We hope to be able to establish all those water tanks in this short period of time. However, there are a lot of property improvements we're looking at, and it just might not be feasible. We would request rewording of that condition to include removal of the water bag within the two-year period, but not require placement of all of the replacement tanks until the applicant is able to afford that. They are committed to filing further reductions in cultivation size if their water supply is not adequate.
Could you give some clarity on the first one, item number nineteen? What is it that you, as the applicant, are willing to do on that to mitigate that issue? It's been kind of tossed around. I'd like to hear it straight.
So to mitigate the generator use?
Yes.
I mean, honestly, on this applicant who's kind of been hit hard by the idea that they're going to be needing to remove their generator as when they started this process very early on, they did not think generator removal was part of what they would be required to do. And furthermore, other 1.0 farms have not been required to remove this generator and were simply at a loss of why we would be held to a different standard than other farms that happen to process through the planning commission quicker. And it puts our farm at a disadvantage, having to foot the cost of that upgrade, and especially on a time scale like this. There are many costs to take into consideration for a business like this, and also the cannabis industry is very unstable in market price. And so it's hard for a farmer to know that they will be able to afford to do the things you're asking. We we would respectfully request an extension of the deadline for complete removal of generator use to 2030. We would be that would, an extension of the deadline would give the farmer a realistic amount of time to prepare for the major infrastructure improvement that is included in changing this operation from the use of generators to complete solar power, which is going to be the best option in front of them.
I think that was clear. So anything else before? I got four other people that have their hands up. So is there anything else? Being the applicant, I always All right, thank you.
And by the way, I'm the agent, not the applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry, the agent. I apologize. Thank you. Public 7108. Bonnie, you there?
Yes. I wanted to start off with the generators because I was listening to the zoning administrator this morning. And I thought he told an applicant that the state was not going to allow generators after a certain date. I don't know if it was 2024 or 2025, whatever. Well, I think if that's the case, then these people that want to go to 2030. Yeah, this is for an acre grow plus four thousand, four hundred and twenty feet of ancillary nursery. And I'm wondering what category that nursery is under. Is that called outdoor? And the existing outdoor, and we're talking about twenty-three greenhouses and seven different locations. I don't know what kind of outdoor they're talking about. And the amount of water that they're planning on using and how much they're planning on storing doesn't add up. And I would hope that you would set a condition that they can only grow as much as they have water already stored. And as we are going into drought, I'm thinking it's going to be pretty hot and dry in the coming months, considering where we are now. Yeah, and all of these generators. I'm concerned about the oil and all that kind of stuff. I'm really concerned about a fire and how fireproof these places are and who's going to be around close enough to be able to see there's a problem before it turns into a wildland fire. Yeah, an acre, hey, sounds like downsizing, but it'd be the way to go. Yeah, because you're going to do all year dry and processing outside. That's going to take a bunch of generators. You're going to be running those generators when it's the hottest and driest part of the year. So, yeah, and that place is not that far away from where I live. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Carmen Gonzalez.
Excuse me, Commissioners, but I am disabled and use spoken word technology to communicate with others. Thank you for understanding and considering my comments. This is no different than a speaker reading a prepared written statement. I oppose the use of petroleum generators to grow cannabis plants in remote lands. If the business models for growers require artificial lights and fans, then such projects should be located close to existing power resources, not in remote areas of the county. Furthermore, by allowing commercial operations in remote areas away from emergency fire services, the generators pose a clearer present danger of fires. SICA requires that conditions and mitigations attached to permits must be enforceable. And when the evidence shows they are not practical to enforce, that the county may no longer rely on those mitigations to reduce impacts. Among other things, the noise and light mitigations meant to protect sensitive wildlife are totally unenforceable. Sensitive wildlife include birds, bats, mammals, insects, including species listed under the Federal Endangered Species Act, such as northern spotted owl. Humboldt County does not possess the necessary federal take permit, nor has the county consulted with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. As a result, illegal take of protected species is likely occurring throughout Humboldt County. Therefore, the county must stop approving these projects or modify them so that noise and light from generators and supplemental lighting are no longer authorized to exist at all. This is even more important after a report to the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, the thirteenth of April, 2021, by county code enforcement staff, where it was clearly demonstrated that the county cannot actually enforce permit conditions or mitigations on cannabis permits. See testimony from Tuesday, the thirteenth of April, 2021, Board of Supervisors meeting by code enforcement staff. There are simply too many grows scattered throughout remote areas of the county and too few enforcement staff. It is an impossible task. As courts have said, mitigations cannot be simply expressions of hope.
Okay. Done? All right, thank you. Next caller, public 7429. Go ahead. 7429?
Okay, sorry, it was muted. I wanted to suggest that this applicant can start smaller so they can afford to put in water storage and they can afford to develop solar electric power. I am concerned that the county may be leading applicants down a rocky road with the state when the state is going to be requiring things and the county is allowing them now. These folks will be even more frustrated. But I don't feel that we need to allow an acre grow and say, well, you don't have to worry about water storage and you don't have to worry about your generators because you can't afford it. They want to grow an acre. They've been growing an acre. I mean, and I don't think that inspections once a year, especially if someone's doing fifteen in a day, are going to be very in-depth in these issues that you need to be on top of all year. I think that that's the concern, not so much as that they can't get there once a year, but the neighbors are required to sort of be the overseers of whose lights are showing and whose generators are running and where fires are starting. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to comment on public comment section of this hearing? Yeah, there's one, 5375. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is My husband and I own Aloha Humboldt and operate it in Willow Creek. I am calling in to kind of give some perspective about the size and the reach of other counties and, you know, look at where we stand in the market. And when we have so many different restrictions, I think that it's really, really challenging to continue to put more restrictions and things on cultivators that are trying to do the right thing. I'd really like to see more support coming from Measure S funding and I'd love to see a recommendation from the planning commission to put ten percent, twenty percent, maybe more into statute so that the funding is going back to the cultivators that are being taxed to support them.
Okay, thank you. Public 3776.
Hello, this is the agent again. I would like to just clarify a few things. And that is, one thing that one of the public comments said was that we should reduce size at this farm. And I want to clarify that this farm has temporarily reduced size to twenty thousand square foot this year in response to drought conditions. They are also committed to doing so in the future until they can establish the rest of the water storage. I would also like to state in response to fear of fire coming from generators, that generators in these types of areas and at these existing farms have ran for some time. And also that this farmer would be totally open and is planning to include fire suppression aspects in their permanent generator shed building when it's established. That's all, and thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment before I close this and bring it back to the commission? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment. I'm going to bring it back to the commission. And I see two hands up already. Why is it not switching? There we go. Thomas, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
There are multiple things. When I'm looking at this project, it's an outdoor under county definition. I understand people's concerns about generator use, but outdoor under county definition um, under county definition, it's a smaller generator. You're talking about probably something under fifty horsepower, which doesn't come into those requirements of phasing out by the state of California. The generator use is minimal, the fuel consumption is on the minimal scale. You aren't talking about powering thousand watt lights. I'm just going to warn the commission, I've seen the most generators in my life since all of these conditions of approval have been put on generators. So my personal opinion is every condition of approval with a phase out an outdoor generator, you're promoting twenty indoor lights under the trees. You talk about fire danger. Um, I feel at some point in time, I would like our commission to be able to have a discussion and have a distinction between ML one and ML two um and outdoor. Um, it would be really nice to differentiate if there is some compromise about generator use. Um, it's, it's just really hard for me to sit here and listen to a lot of this because if we're trying to encourage people to come in, what's been going on is really discouraging people. And that's it.
Thank you, Thomas. Uh, Brian Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, appreciated all the public discussion on this item. Um, and there's clearly a substantial give and take that needs to happen with certain projects. Uh, I still feel the need to curtail generator use at some point. And while I, I don't think it's fair to put unreasonable expectations, I personally don't feel that the staff's recommended December thirty first, twenty twenty-five is unreasonable. Um, I'd be willing to make a motion if other commissioners felt the same way. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brian. Any other commissioners want to comment on that or anything else on this?
I do, I have something to say. I, I have a little bit, I have a little bit of experience with um using solar in these remote areas and the unreliability of that. And I, I can kind of, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of conflicted because I also think that we should reduce um generator use, but I, I, if I was a grower, I'd be really confused as to, you know, how much solar I need. I don't know if there's a standard. It seems like we, you know, we're telling them to do something, but we're not giving them any real guidance on how much solar they need. Maybe the county has something that I'm not aware of. But when you say this is, you know, you need to go to solar, you know, what does that mean? Um, how much solar, you know, it's very scientific, how much solar do I need uh versus when is a backup generator acceptable? And so I think you're leaving it really up in the air. And I think that there should be some guidance for these growers so that they, they have an idea that you can price it out. You know, I know when we go to solar, just backup solar can be hundreds of thousands of dollars. And you're going to have to hire an engineer to determine how much solar you need. You know, so it's, it's, to me, it's all up in the air and it's, it's not fair. Like I, I heard someone say earlier, it's just not fair to leave it up to them to try to figure it out or maybe get in trouble because they didn't figure it out correctly. Um, I'm all for solar. I wish they were a hundred percent solar, but I think that there needs to be some kind of guidance for them to know what's backup. Because, you know, if I'm out there and I have a grow and I need power and I'm not getting it from my solar, because sometimes you just don't, um, I'm going to use my generator and say I needed it for backup. So, you know, am I breaking a rule? I don't know. Um, and so I think that someone said we need to have a better discussion on this. Maybe it needs to be a subject. I also hear a lot about the fires and concerns for fires, and I wonder if CDF has, you know, um, discussed this at all with the county? Is it, are these generators starting fires? Or is this just something that, you know, people are throwing out there? And if so, then there needs to be a standard for what is an acceptable enclosure. Maybe the county already has that to minimize the fire. What kind of fire suppression apparatus needs to be on the site? And what kind of training does the growers need in, in terms of being able to suppress fires in these very remote locations? Because if not, you're putting a lot of um, you know, on CDF or your local volunteer fire department. So, you know, maybe there's already answers to all this and I, I just don't know those answers. But we talk about it at, seems like every time it comes up. And it should be something that's already addressed before it even gets to us because we have some sort of standard that, you know, we're asking all of the um people to live up to. And then we can not have to discuss it every single time we have an application in front of us. That's what I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Thomas, I see you have your hand back up.
I just reread condition nineteen, so it's a question for staff. Um, it says the use of generator as a primary power source. So with this condition, does that mean they can have a solar array with a backup generator? And if so, how much percentage of their power usage needs to be a solar arrayed? I'm just, that's really vague, I guess, so I want it to be on the record right now.
Yeah, um, so I would defer to the applicant's agent to see what percentage they're seeking because the proposed array, I, I don't have an answer for that. Um, but I just know that they didn't want it to be a hundred percent.
If I could step in through the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
So typically, uh, one of the considerations here is, as Commissioner Mulder mentioned, this is outdoor, lights are not being used to cultivate here. So this is really for the ancillary facilities. Uh, we have used eighty percent in the past. And to give some guidance in this condition would seem appropriate. If the commission is comfortable leaving this at twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five, then adding a clarification that eighty percent of the power shall come from a solar array. The applicant shall prepare an energy budget to demonstrate their total power needs and design a solar array to accomplish that. The percentage is fairly subjective at this point.
All right. Thank you, Director. Brian, I see you have your hand up.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the item uh as recommended uh previously uh with the, with the modification that the, what the director just stated about the eighty percent of the power um coming from, from solar with an approved um power budget being submitted to staff. Um, other than that, that's my motion.
Thank you, Brian. We have a motion. I see Sarah has her hand up. Do we have a second to that motion while it's?
I'll make it.
Sure. Okay, so we have a second to the motion, but I, I still want to give Sarah a chance to speak. She must have something to comment about. So go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a brief clarification on condition twelve. It's not relocation of water tanks, it is the replacement of them. So I will um put that language into um how the conditions will be approved by the commission. I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. So, uh, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion on that motion in a second?
Um, well, I, I guess I heard the applicant say that about the removal of the water bladders and replacement with hard tanks, that they are concerned that we should revise that, that condition so that they can remove the bladders, but that they have longer to replace them with additional storage capacity. And that makes sense to me if we could.
Go ahead, Director.
Commissioner Levy, thank you for bringing that up. I, I think that that would be a fair condition to modify condition twelve to indicate that within two years the water bladders be removed, that the applicant shall not cultivate more area than there is water in storage available. And that prior to beginning the cultivation season, the applicant shall demonstrate how much water they have in storage and shall lay out a cultivation plan to consistent with the amount of water that's in storage. And
That, um, that says very, very well what I hope we could incorporate into the, into the motion.
That's acceptable to me.
And why?
All right, so the addition to the motion and the second is okay with that? So any further discussion on that? Yep, and done. Call for a roll call vote.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Thomas?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone. That was, okay, usually we take a break sometime about this time. So let's take a five-minute break before we move on to our next uh item. So we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you. And we somehow made it through the consent calendar. So now we are on public hearings. And the first one is the Morris Coastal Development Permit and Special Permit in the Trinidad area. And I would ask for a staff report, please.
Evening, commissioners, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello, Mr.?
Hello, um, my name is Alyssa Suarez, and I am the assigned planner for the Morris Coastal Development Permit and Special Permit. The project is located at twelve seventy-seven Stagecoach Road in the Trinidad area. Access to the site is located along the twelve-foot wide paved driveway off of Stagecoach Road. The parcel is zoned rural residential agriculture and has a manufactured home combining zone as well as a design review combining zone due to its location in the Trinidad coastal scenic area and a riparian and streams corridor combining zone due to the proximity of Hobson Creek on the northern side of the parcel. The parcel is designated rural residential under the Trinidad area plan. The parcel is currently developed with a primary residence and onsite wastewater treatment system, one hundred thousand gallon pond, an existing garage, an existing guest house slash garage, and one working well. There are a total of seven project components included in the applicant's proposal that I'll be going over. Project number one includes the construction of a new detached garage slash shop building with a footprint of approximately nine hundred and ninety-two square feet. Project number two includes the remodel of an existing single-story, one thousand seventy square foot garage and guest house. The remodel would include the addition of a bedroom, a bathroom, a living room, and a kitchen. This unit would be considered an accessory dwelling unit. Project number three includes the construction of a new single-story, seven hundred and twenty-eight square foot detached garage. Major vegetation would be required to build the garage in that it will include four trees that are located at the edge of a one hundred foot protective riparian corridor. Project number four includes the construction of a new, single-story detached ADA restroom. The restroom would provide convenience for the owners while out in the garden or doing yard work. Plumbing for the structure would be connected to an existing septic tank and leach field. Project number five includes the replacement of an existing entry gate with a new eight-foot tall wet privacy entrance. Project number six includes the installation of two new wells for a total of three working wells on the parcel. One well would require the construction of a spring box for irrigation, domestic use, and fire safety. The spring box would withdraw groundwater from a bench along the side of Hobson Creek and has been authorized by the Department of Fish and Wildlife under a draft lake or stream bed alteration agreement. The second well would be located along the edge of the riparian buffer. The water will be stored in four new water storage tanks consisting of four thousand nine hundred and ninety gallons each for a total of seven water storage tanks. The spring box well would replace an existing water intake structure in Hobson Creek. In order to construct the spring box well, a twelve-foot wide and a hundred and twenty-foot long access road must be constructed from the southwest portion of the property and will begin access from the driveway parking areas through the lawn and through the natural areas associated with Hobson Creek. No trees need to be removed to accommodate the temporary access road, and all disturbed areas will be restored as recommended in the restoration plan that was prepared for the project. Project number seven includes major vegetation removal under a cowfire structure protection exemption for the removal of a hundred and seventy-nine trees. A hundred and fifty of these trees are within the one hundred foot protective buffer for streams and riparian corridors, wetlands, and the one hundred foot ESHA buffer or environmentally sensitive habitat area buffer. The tree removal is intended to address tree crown and under story fire hazard and provide defense, defensible space within a hundred and fifty feet to three hundred feet of illegally permitted structure. A tree removal plan has been provided by Western Timber Services for the project. I also want to point out that the forest practice rules allow for removal of trees from any permitted structures. And the applicant is proposing to remove trees on his property that is measured a hundred and fifty feet from the eastern property owner's residence who have expressed concern with this proposal. This area is shown here on this map. The map also illustrates the trees located in the ESHA buffer and the proximity to natural features and structures on and off site. The proposed projects are principally permitted as accessory uses to the primary residence on the parcel in the RA zone. The major vegetation removal within the riparian corridor is allowed for the purposes of public safety, subject to mitigation which has been implemented into the design of the project. The project has been found to be exempt from environmental review pursuant to classes one through four of the CECA guidelines. There have been a number of concerns raised by adjacent property owners. And these concerns include the extent of the tree removal, the impacts to the riparian areas on the property, the water extraction from Hobson Creek, the use of the property, and the concern that the applicant may install non-native plantings on the property post-tree removal. In response to some of these concerns, the applicant has voluntarily agreed to retain seven trees that are located near the eastern property line. In order to address the public comments raised by adjacent property owners, staff believes that removal of the trees near the rear property line, up to the east side of the property, that that would be detrimental to the public welfare by diminishing the adjacent property owner's quality of life and negatively impacting surrounding parcels and the existing natural setting of the Trinidad scenic area. Therefore, staff does recommend conditional approval of the tree removal, such that removal of the trees would not be allowed greater than a hundred and fifty feet from the existing structures on the Morris site. The onsite language here is intentional to restrict the applicant from removing trees that are measured at a hundred and fifty feet from the neighbor's residence, which the forest practice rules would otherwise allow and would be beyond the one hundred and fifty feet measured from the Morris structures. As mentioned previously, the neighbors do not want these trees to be removed. I also want to emphasize that this was a very hard analysis for staff because of the competing interest for fire safety and the need to protect public welfare. Staff also recommends that prior to any tree removal and within, uh, within sixty days of the project approval, that the applicant will be required to submit an updated tree removal map that excludes the trees from beyond this one hundred and fifty-foot buffer from the existing onsite structures. Additional recommended conditions of approval include forbearance of the proposed wells during July fifteenth to October fifteenth and require the applicant to install monitoring devices to monitor the amount of, of water that is being used while in operation and to keep logs of water use to provide during onsite inspections and to comply with the lake and stream bed alteration agreement. To protect the environmentally sensitive habitat areas that were existing will be installed fifty feet from the identified wetlands onsite. And restoration efforts will be employed that include the and restoration efforts will be employed that include the removal of non-native species in the ESHA buffer and replanting with native species as identified in the ESHA Impact Analysis and Evasive Species Management Plan that was prepared for the project. A condition of approval has also been included to prohibit any non-native plantings on the parcel and this requirement is also supported by the Coastal Commission and the Department of Fish and Wildlife. Planning staff believes that the applicant has submitted evidence in support of making all of the required findings for approving the permits before you with conditions. Additionally, in order to protect the public welfare, planning recommends conditional approval of the tree removal component, such that removal of the healthy trees would not be allowed outside of the 150-foot zone surrounding the existing structures on the Morris property. Planning staff believes that limiting the tree removal to the area within 150 feet of the onsite structures is an appropriate balance between the need for fire safety and the need to protect the public welfare. Staff recommends that the planning commission find the project exempt from environmental review, make all of the required findings for approval of the project based on the evidence in the staff report, and adopt the resolution approving the Morris project subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And that is the end of my presentation. I will open it up for questions. Thank you.
I have a question. Let me turn my video back on. So if you look at the map, it looks like all the neighbors have already cut a lot of their trees down and opened up their properties and that this property in particular has a lot of trees on it and probably could use some thinning. I don't really understand the neighbor's concern so much on these tree removals because it looks like they've removed their trees. I'm all for cutting back, you know, and providing fire protection for the building. So I'm not really good with restraining the tree cutting.
I will say that a lot of the comments that were raised from the adjacent property owners, they did mention that they are in support of removal of trees for fire protection and they do remove, they don't remove the trees, but they do do limbing on their property and that is the extent that it's necessary. But yes, the applicant is proposing to remove 179 trees up to 300 feet from existing structures on site and 150 feet from the adjacent neighbor's residence.
Alan, you're muted. I didn't know that I was. I apologize. So Thomas, I was trying to get you to...
So, this is a new one for me, so I'm gonna ask a lot of stupid questions. So because this is in the coastal zone, we have to approve a permit. But as far as tree removal within the CAL FIRE setbacks, where do we have jurisdiction to supersede Forestry Practices Act? That's where I'm kind of confused. And the third question I have, this is approving so they can actually sell the timber. Would it be unlawful for the landowner to cut the timber down and mill it up and use it on their own property or any other property within Humboldt County? Or to cut it down and just chip it? I'm sorry, I had lots of questions.
You want to address that, Director, or you want to wait for all of them?
Yeah, no, that's a great series of questions. And Commissioner Mulder, you are correct. The distinguishing factor here is the fact that it is in the coastal zone and any development in the coastal zone requires a permit unless it's specifically exempted. Tree removal is the development within the coastal zone. So even though this may comply with the Forest Practices Act, the Coastal Act, and the local coastal programs supersede that. And so that's why we are processing a coastal development permit. There are many factors that come into play here with respect to ESHA, with respect to major vegetation, which is typically something that's protected. And so that's why we're here and that's why the findings that Ms. Suarez was identifying need to be made and considered.
Mike, I see you have your, and Melanie, you have your hands up, and I'll go after you. So go ahead, Mike.
Yes, my question to staff is about CAL FIRE's requirements for clearance around residential structures. Is there any difference that they have with regards to inland versus coastal zone thinning of trees? Because right at the coast, it is a different type of moisture that's here and trees, and is there any difference?
I am not aware of a difference in the Forest Practices Act that treats the coastal zone and the inland area differently.
So even though it's moisture, we've got lots of moisture and it's cooler and all of that, there is no differentiation?
Right. So one of the things the Forest Practices Act does is it gives a great degree of deference to the opinion of a forester, a registered professional forester, which has been involved in this, to identify how much tree removal is appropriate.
And that's what we've got on here for this report.
Correct.
And I have to admit, in part of these reports tonight, several of the prior consent items, items E2 and E3 that were done by some consultants, on their report, the executive summary, I enjoyed seeing the conditional numbers in that report as you're looking through the executive summary. Whereas we haven't done that, I really, I think it's a good thing. It makes it easier for the public to see as well as myself and the commissioners, I'm sure, to then line it out and be able to look at those conditions within the executive summary. I'd like to see that more often.
We'll work on that. Thank you.
Melanie?
Yes, thank you. I was wondering what the flexibility was in terms of the reforestation plan?
I'm not sure I under... Go ahead, Alyssa.
Yeah, can you clarify the flexibility? I'm not sure I understand that.
Well, the applicant intends to reforest.
They plan to re-vegetate disturbed areas with native species. But...
Go ahead.
With not replant in terms of new trees that would, you know, re-vegetate the area. It would mostly be shrubs.
I see. And all right. And then my second question is in terms of the forest harvest residue. What is the plan for that? Is the, as, just to address something that Commissioner Newman said, the only difference really working in the field is the burn permit in terms of moisture and obviously given that this location is in the coastal zone and has neighbors, probably won't get one of those. So what are their plans for the forest harvest residue?
Yes, and that was identified in the Structure Protection Exemption project description prepared by Western Timber Services. So they do have operational requirements that are outlined in that document. I believe that all surface fuels that are created by the timber operations, that they would be it'll be chipped or removed while the large debris would be retained onsite. I think that answers your question.
Right, okay. But you don't have any details whether it's going to go to a local mill or...
Not at the moment. I'm sure that that might have been addressed in this project description. I just, I don't have it at my fingertips right now.
You don't know if they're participating in the bioenergy, forest bioenergy program here?
No.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to have my hand up, and I waited for my colleagues to comment. This is something that I've heard a couple times from registered professional foresters and that the county is stepping out of their jurisdiction on projects like this and doing what is the job of registered professional foresters. So I'd like to ask staff what, how they, why they feel that they can usurp what the RPFs are saying on projects. And the reason that I, it really makes me wonder about this is this is not much different than when we're dealing with cannabis projects and we're talking about hydrology. I mean, the comment we get is that, well, there's nobody that's, you know, trained or a professional in our midst to do that job. And as far as I know, there's no registered professional foresters working at the county as well. So my question would be, why does the county feel they have the right to tell them what they should do on this project? I would think that this is, the county is doesn't have that power because it's a state issue and CDF and the registered professional foresters would have that purview. But I'd like to hear what you have to say, Director.
So in the inland area, I think that is true. We've been having those conversations with foresters and CAL FIRE in terms of where does the county's jurisdiction begin and end? And where does CAL FIRE's jurisdiction begin and end? How does the Forest Practices Act fit into that, which is state legislation? In this particular case, we have a corresponding bit of state legislation called the Coastal Act that regulates things far differently than anything else in the state when it comes to land use law. And so the Coastal Act requires that we look at situations where there is vegetation removal being done within the setbacks of the ESHA, which this has, within riparian areas, which this has, that has major vegetation removal just as a coastal resource, which this has. And so that is, the long and the short of it is there is, at least in the coastal area, legislation that is at the state level that dictates this review.
Okay. Doesn't seem right to me, but I guess I have to go along with it. I just, it's interesting that we have to be specialized in certain areas, but we don't have to be in other areas, I guess. I know that probably seems kind of vague, but I just, it seems troubling that the county can chime in on this one, but they can't on so many other issues. And I don't know, I have a hard time.
Well, let me, like, be clear. We're not trying to significantly challenge what the foresters recommended. Within the 150-foot setback, I think we're supportive of that. I think outside of the 150-foot setback, and the Forest Practices Act does allow thinning between 150 and 300 feet. But then that has to be balanced with what the Coastal Act does. And so what we're saying is that we're trying to provide a recommendation to the planning commission, which acknowledges the public's right to be concerned about coastal resources with the Forest Practices Act need to protect residential structures. And so this is, the recommendation is based upon that balance.
That's good. I just wanted some clarity on it and I I don't have a problem with, I think the 150 is enough, okay? I thought that when I read it before I even started questioning anything, but I, you know, it's interesting. I just... It'd be nice for there to be some consistency, I guess, in in how things are interpreted, what we can and can't do with the county. I mean, that's my own issue, though. All right, thank you. Any other questions for, from the commission before we open this up for public comment? All right, Ian Nunn. I will open up the public comment and the first one is Bonnie Blackberry. Go ahead, Bonnie.
Hi, actually, I don't think I did raise my hand.
Well...
But I will say, I will say, I just, this the well water taking it from so close to a creek and the edge of Maria, that's a little concerning with where we are in the drought. And forbearance starting in July, I mean, we were, we hardly, maybe there's a lot more water up there, but here in southern Humboldt, I think forbearance, it would be best if they could set it closer to what there is for cannabis. Okay, until the drought's over and there's more water, just we gotta deal with this drought. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next caller is David Adams.
Okay, my name is Margaret Adams. I'm the rear property owner adjacent to the Morris property. I was part of the original 14 acres and we have to split off five acres. I want to thank the planning commission or planning department for coming out and making an onsite visit and listening to our concerns, especially the tree harvest and that's so close to our property and the proposed water extraction. We agree with their recommendations for mitigating the tree harvest near this rear property boundary, not exceeding the 150 structure protection defense and the enforcement prohibiting planting non-native species. While we appreciate the recommended water extraction monitoring, we feel it's not enough to remedy this looming water condition, and here are the reasons. Everybody knows we have a water crisis. Experts are pointing to the lack of controls on groundwater pumping, especially new wells. Therefore, we're asking the planning commission to seriously assess the plan for installing the two new wells, adding to an existing well. Immediate neighborhood property owners are being put at risk. We all have seen the water truck deliveries in our neighborhood. Because of the environmental sensitivity, many of the neighboring owners have chosen to preserve the integrity of our bordering Hobson Creek by not extracting water. Mr. Morris has installed a creek pump that has been active since he's purchased the property. We have alerted the planning department because there's some question regarding on whose property this pump is actually placed. We have concern for the variety of the observed wildlife, including otters, giant Pacific salamanders, and all the other assorted animals. Four large storage tanks have already been installed, adding to the existing three. We recognize the need for fire protection, water storage, but object to excessive irrigation that is presently occurring and the property owner's own stated proposed needs for irrigation. The spring box well, it's going to be 20 feet from Hobson Creek, has an allowable diversion rate of 10 gallons per minute, that's 600 gallons per hour. The conservation strategies require... The conservation strategies required, we're wondering who will adequately, adequately monitor and make sure these restrictions are followed. The owners have not resided on this.
Thirty seconds, ma'am. Go faster.
Pardon me? Okay. It's an active destination VRBO when they're not there. Given the ongoing water crisis, no one should be irrigating indiscriminately. We've observed continued watering of the approximate one acre adjoining meadow, clearly an excess use. We also noticed that the almost quarter acre pond has a strange looking nozzle spraying device operating non-stop. The winter height of that.
Time is up.
Pardon me?
Your time is up.
Okay.
Three minutes, everybody gets three minutes. Thank you. All right. Next caller is two, seven, four, three. Go ahead, two, seven, four, three.
My name is David Adams from, uh, the adjacent property. And, and uh, we have concerns about the effect this extensive proposal, uh, including water extraction and significant timber harvest will have on the environment, including streams, ESHAs, wildlife, public welfare and property values. Many facets of this project do not appear to have been fully vetted and many statements of the applicant and hired contractors, including RPF, have been taken at face value. For example, a question was posed to the RPF by planning staff on what happens if alternative scenarios such as limbing and clearing under story at different distances are enacted opposed to the full proposed harvest. The answer came back with a simple statement with no specific data or references and no follow-up questions for evidence. I believe the applicant is mistaken in his use of the exemption protection. I would like to question the methodology. No indication is provided of how many trees were actually measured and therefore claims may be inaccurate. The applicant has claimed that all tree harvesting is for the purpose of fuel reduction, but the plan seems to leave out the applicant's plan to replace this vegetation with botanical garden plants. No attempt has been made to assess the increased fire danger and allowing so much new sunlight and wind penetration in these areas. In the letter provided by Greg O'Connell, environmental scientist from CDFW, he states, quote, "There appears to be some inconsistencies regarding the intent to remove trees for fire hazard reduction and subsequent replanting of the fire defensible spaces with landscape vegetation." As part of the whole action under review in the SEQA and CDP, I recommend including any post-tree removal planned goals, objectives, landscaping as part of the project description. This is relevant because it's my understanding that redwood trees are generally more fire resistant than many other tree species and removing redwood trees rather than limbing and replanting a relatively open understory with shrubs may actually increase the fire hazard risk. If fire hazard reduction is the premise for tree removal, further explanation of future use and fire hazard risk analysis in those areas should occur." End quote. The plan as written does not meet fourteen CCR one oh three A C six A as the trees in the post harvest dam will not be well distributed. Sections through our property line would be almost void of trees. Furthermore, the plan does not meet the requirements for being categorically exempt from environmental review set forth in SEQA section one five three oh four. The specific language allows fuel management to one hundred feet.
Thirty seconds.
Extra hazardous fire conditions. The specifics intend is not to circumvent environmental review to one hundred fifty feet or three hundred feet and the area is classified as only moderate fire risk. We ask that you at a minimum enact all conditions and recommendations of planning staff, but ask that you not approve any special permit that you don't have adequate enforcement resources or meaningful remedies for. The applicant has shown a disregard for rules for the unauthorized installation, continually pumping water directly from Hobson Creek.
Your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you, sir. Next caller, Carmen Gonzalez. You there, Carmen?
Yes, but I am disabled and use spoken word technology to communicate with others. Thank you for understanding and listening to my comments. This is no different than a speaker reading a written statement. This project is very heavy-handed and involves the removal of way to many trees. A simple timber harvest plan in this location would not be approved as proposed. The coastal development permit you are considering allows much more deforestation and damage to the environment than Cal Fire would allow. Coastal Trinidad is not a high fire prone area. Fog drip soaks this area throughout the summer. The applicant's ruse of wildfire concerns is simply a way to remove more trees and commits to county to even more deforestation. This is such an idiotic statement. To remove trees that are over four feet in diameter for fire concerns, what a joke. To answer Mike Newman and John Ford, it is actually called logic to know that fog soaked redwoods are not the same as young duck fur and tan oak thickets with cannabis grows and petroleum generators. To answer Alan Bongio, the county is implementing the Coastal Act, not usurping any RPF or Cal Fire jurisdiction. Please read the laws you are implementing. Please read the Coastal Act and understand the county's role and obligations. Statements from commission as indicate that they are not aware of their own duties, calling into question all of your decisions. The development components presented today are part of a larger development scheme that the applicant has failed to disclose. The applicant wishes to develop a tourist attraction to this property. Previous applications for a large tourist tree house and botanical gardens show this to be true. In fact, the money from timber harvest is to be used for the larger development project. Will the county be piecemealing this project too? Please deny this project.
Thank you. Next caller, Danny Sikolski.
Hi there. Um, I live directly to the north of the Morris property, just on the other side of Hobson Creek. There are two parts of the Morris plan that concern me. First, the sheer number of redwood trees, uh, I believe it's a hundred and seventy-nine planned to remove. And second, the amount of water they plan to use. The Morris has walked us through the property, which we appreciate. Uh, and it seems like there is a high percentage of the total number of trees that are planned for, for removal. I would like to see, uh, a smaller percentage of the trees removed. Also, I am concerned, um, at the, at the impact that is going to have on Stagecoach Road, which is not designed, uh, for such heavy machinery like the timber harvest trucks. For the water, my understanding is that they, um, plan or already maybe do take water directly from, uh, Hobson Creek, um, and, um, and, uh, and that they're going to plant non-native plants, although they said that they're changed that to native plants, which is good. Um, it would be nice, be nice to see a water usage plan just so that, uh, you know, to know how much water they plan on using because it feels like they want to use a lot of water and we are in a very low water table environment here in Trinidad, even though it seems like we shouldn't be, we are, uh, like, um, you know, someone else said, uh, you see a lot of water trucks around because people's wells go dry. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Larry Goldberg.
Hello, my name is Larry Goldberg. My wife and I have lived at twelve twenty-five Stagecoach Road for thirty-seven years now. We've worked to be responsible property owners managing our forest parcel in an environmentally responsible manner. We've been working with Jen and Macklin Morris since they purchased the property just north of us about five years ago. And we appreciate the efforts the Morris's have undertaken to improve their property. But we are concerned about several issues regarding the coastal development permit, including the water extraction permits in stream or near stream wells, the commercial harvest plan for over a hundred sixty trees with environmental sensitive habitat area, the impacts to our neighbor Scenic Viewshed, that's Marjorie and Dwayne Adams, and the need for remedial action after harvest. Several of the, the neighboring and downstream properties could be severely impacted by the Morris request for increased water extraction. The Sustainable Groundwater Management Act was enacted to, uh, address this increasing emergency. The Trinidad aquifer must be protected when annual recharge precipitation is dwindling as it is presently. We're concerned about their extravagant water use and believe that they should adopt some stringent water conservation measures. We're especially concerned with water use to continually fill the existing pond, which routinely drops its water level every year with cyclical season changes. And watering their extensive lawn in the rhododendron meadow, a highlight of the property that consumes an enormous amount of water daily. We hear water running from our property and while it may be recirculated water from the pond, it also may be well water or stream water used to replenish the pond. We also have expressed our opposition to replanting any of the removed redwood trees with non-native species. We noted on our tour of the property, there were several large, uh, several dozen large Japanese maples in front boxes in their, uh, yard. According to Macklin, they're to be placed around their home. We own Japanese maples and know that they need significant water. I'm concerned that these non-native trees, which are not part of the overall coastal development plan, will however, impact the water usage for the property. We agree with the staff report that recommends a water conservation plan to minimize our water usage, which should also be monitored by a responsible agency. As far as the redwood removal, just under eighty percent of the trees that are scheduled for removal are coastal redwoods. Many are mature. An unanswered question is the lack of information about the number of trees that will be spared from removal. Is there a healthy balance or is a harvest excessive? While Mr. Morris has assured us that highly trained professionals prepared all harvest plans, we want to know what percentage of trees from the overall property are scheduled to be removed versus remaining trees. While a ten percent removal may be warranted, a fifty percent removal would be excessive. We support fire fuel reduction and applaud this action, but the total amount of biomass to be removed is in dispute. We wish to know what percentage of total forest tree inventory the hundred sixty plus trees represent. We support file fire fuel reduction and understand the need for brush removal.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Next caller is Imac.
Star six, unmute. Hey, uh, can you hear me now? Yep. Oh, good. Hi.
And there's two of us.
There's actually two of us here, husband and wife. Uh, my name is, uh, Timmy Jackson and my wife is Emma. Uh, so I'd like three minutes apiece if we could. I'm, I'm going to read a prepared statement. Uh, thank you for taking our calls. We, we live, um, just up creek from, um, uh, the, the Morris property there. Uh, the health of Hobson Creek is our paramount concern. This is an important riparian and wetland habitat and is classified as a fish bearing class one creek. It is a wildlife corridor and a source of water used by myriad species. It was also an attractive consideration in our decision to purchase and reside here. Unlike the Morris's, we actually live here full-time. During the driest months, the amount of surface water is limited, so much so that we have never used our deeded access pump house and irrigation system that is immediately upstream from the proposed Morris property diversions. We prefer a healthy creek over an irrigated soggy golf course like lawn such as we witnessed during our recent hosted tour of the Morris property. We're greatly dismayed that their project, if approved, will drop two new wells into the riparian zone and add an additional twenty thousand gallons of storage. Property already has more than a hundred thousand gallons of storage capacity, more than sufficient for, uh, for fire safety. This seems excessive for residential property. The Environmental Protection Agency lists the average household use at three hundred gallons per day. This is a shared resource, not just among human neighbors, but a vibrant community of non-human beings as well. How can one be entitled to so much? Why do they need so much capacity? If I read the published proposal and Mr. John Ford's recommendations correctly, it is to be stipulated that no non-native vegetation be planted. If that is correct, why would they need to irrigate so intensively? The, uh, native plants are inherently adapted to local environment, including a relatively dry season. Where is the published data as to how much water is flowing through Hobson Creek from month to month and from year to year? If that doesn't exist, how can the amount that can be safely diverted be known? If Hobson Creek water diversion is to cease during the driest months from July fifteenth through October fifteenth, as per Mr. Ford's recommendation, how does the county propose to provide oversight and ensure compliance? Uh, his recommendation is that the Morris's be required to keep a record of rate and total diversion, but nothing is stipulated about who has access to those records, how calibration of those meters is ascertained and certified, and recourse for failure to adhere to the stipulation. Given the reality of climate change, as we say, may not be true tomorrow. And what is the mechanism for future review of permission granted today? I'm no forestry expert, but I seem to remember that redwoods actually harvest the evaporated oceanic moisture from the air and channel it to the ground. So if Mr. Morris removes a substantial portion of the canopy, the ground beneath will become drier and more water will evaporate from the warmer creek that he's proposing to simultaneously siphon off. This will require still more water to be diverted to keep his property to his preferred level of soggy lushness. Wouldn't it make more fire safety sense to remove understory ladder fuels like through limbing and cutting smaller trees and brush and leave the relatively fire resistant redwoods alone? Thank you.
That's three minutes, fifteen seconds, so.
And there's another person. This is the wife, Emma. Can I go ahead?
Yep, go.
Okay, okay. Um, we live in a very unique and fragile ecosystem, cutting down a hundred and seventy perfectly good, fire resistant redwood trees and extracting and diverting possibly up to a hundred thousand gallons of water from Hobson Creek and the area around it will greatly impact this very fragile, sensitive ecosystem. Redwood forests are necessary to support the life forms in this area. I believe the tree extraction and heavy harvesting of water will have a detrimental effect on this sensitive ecosystem. He references removing a hundred sixty-two redwood trees for fire suppression, yet redwood trees have highly fire resistant bark. And he has also, we all saw several dozen very, very large potted Japanese maples on his property that I assume he plans to plant after cutting down the fire resistant redwoods. Um, I think the replacement trees will be much more susceptible to fire danger. It sickens me that our forests are already in danger from us humans and this plan overtly damages our beautiful redwood forest even further. He's seeking permission to cut down a hundred and fifty trees within the protected buffer for streams and riparian borders. My question is, why have these protective measures that can be violated? The protective borders are there for protections of ecosystems, not to just be tossed aside because of some humans' desire for changing the ecosystem of the natural area already in existence. And then there's the creatures and critters that share this beautiful, beautiful ecosystem with us. For instance, the giant Pacific salamanders, whose habitats are very clear. They need clean, cool streams, preferably shaded by old conifers. And the presence of these salamanders is.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, well, he's going to kill off all the damn salamanders by causing slush in the creek and more sunlight to the creek. And what about the roads when he has all these logging trucks rolling over it? It's a crappy road already and is he going to compensate the county for damaging Stagecoach Road? Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, Kathleen De Deola. I, I'm sorry for the pronunciation.
That's all right. Deola. Um, I'm going to read my previously prepared, uh, comments. Uh, we believe that some trees in the riparian buffer could be in jeopardy. We are confused about the claim of structure protection exemption, especially for trees over a hundred and fifty feet from their home and the considerable income potentially. And Morris have both explained that this harvest will simply pay but I believe that the harvest will help provide the funding needed for their significant property projects being proposed here. The trees slated for removal near the Adams property line are not near any structures and most likely share extending root structures with neighboring trees. We ask that a thorough evaluation be conducted to determine the validity of use of structure protection foresting for the harvest of so many coastal redwoods in a densely forested redwood grove. We are unaware as to which authorities were consulted or if a permit is required for a new pump in this creek. The Adams told us that they were not informed of the action and there is some question regarding on whose property the pump is placed. Other property owners are equally concerned about the health and sustainability of this creek since the flow is almost non-existent in the summer. Mr. Morris has assured us that he is simply replacing an existing well, but I have no basis to acknowledge or dispute this. An additional concern is the possibility of a future commercial use of this property. Jen and Macklin have stated to us and others that they intend to convert the land to a large botanical garden, including non-native plants and suggested that it be open to the public. In fact, the number four project structure is the. In fact, the number four project structure is the building of a standalone ADA compliant restroom in the middle of the property. Could this be for public use? In addition, his current single-family home is an active VRBO destination rental. His request for permits for so many additional structures suggests the possibility for increasing public traffic. We have no problem with renting a VRBO or Airbnb or maintaining a mother-in-law unit, but a public garden is inappropriate for the area.
Thank you. Next caller is Public 2064. There, 2064, star six, unmute.
Hello, this is Macklin Morris, the applicant.
Hello.
Hello. You know, my wife and I wrote a one-page. Yeah, hang on, I'm gonna mute my computer. It's echoing on me. Anyway, we wrote a one-page statement that put together a little brief history of what we're trying to do, and that was sent in as your supplemental information, number two, page ten. And attached to that are a list of meetings that occurred both in the county office and onsite walkthroughs. Additionally, there's a schedule of plans and reports. And we submitted for this coastal development permit in October of two thousand seventeen, and I went on to add projects through June of two thousand eighteen, so we didn't have to go through the coastal development permitted process again. And the plans and the scope of work were complete in June of two thousand eighteen, including the forest management plan done by Western Timber. The spring box near Hobson Creek was approved by CDFW in September eleventh, two thousand eighteen, and it is to replace an existing diversion that is licensed by the state water resources control board and had been in place since the fifties. And that's been continuously licensed, and those reportings have been submitted. The addition of a second drilled well is because our existing well is a really poor producer, and it is proposed on the opposite side of Hobson Gully and creek from the Danny Shaholsky properties and the Timmy properties. It is nowhere, it's, I forget how many feet, but I don't know if it's six or eight hundred feet from the Adams well, and that location was suggested by Steve Fitch. So there is no proposed increase in water usage on this property, for starters. And also, Danny Shaholsky had mentioned the logging on this property. The property which he recently purchased was logged, and twenty truckloads of logs came off his property in recent years. So hi- his property was logged. So the first thing I did is hired Western Timber to come up with a plan. I put on a fireproof clay roof on the house in the garage. And I want to read to you from the report prepared by Western Timber, page eighteen, which is a part of the application, which was revised in January twelfth of two thousand twenty-one. By reducing the amount of fuels on the ground level in the mid and lower canopy, fire is less likely to spread vertically into the upper canopy. Additionally, by creating horizontal separation between the tree grounds, fire is less likely to spread between tree grounds if a crown fire does develop. I began removing fuels on ground level, and you may say that we're an area of moderate risk for fire because of the coastal influence here, but this area has burned three times in the last century in the nineteen hundreds, as documented by Charlie Oldhouse, our registered professional forester. And I also was surprised to find out that when we did our structural engineering calculations for our shop, that the wind design load calculations were the equivalent of a class three hurricane. The Great Coastal Gale event of two thousand seven was exactly that situation. Put together that kind of wind event with a wildfire, and we have a catastrophe, not unlike the fire that burned from Patrick's Point all the way to the city of Trinidad. I looked online this morning and at the update today, July first, right now, there are twenty-three fires burning in California totaling two hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight acres this morning, July first. And in response to Tricia Shortridge's letter on April eleventh, I wrote to her that California in recent years, I'm sorry, that the Los Angeles Times reported the official death toll from the Camp Fire from Paradise, California stands at eighty-six, but doctors and other experts say that the number is much higher. Associated Press reported on February eleventh, two thousand twenty, doctors and other experts say that at least fifty more people, many elderly or ill, probably died as a result of the two thousand eighteen wildfire that devastated the town of Paradise, California, but were not counted because in the official death toll. And the Sacramento Bee reported on October sixth, two thousand twenty, regarding the fires in Napa and Sonoma, those major blazes have combined for thirty-four confirmed deaths. Mercury News reported October second, two thousand twenty, thirty-two deaths have been attributed to California wildfires since August. The two thousand eighteen wildfires alone, this is after I applied for this fire forest management permit, caused more than a hundred and fifty billion dollars in damages.
You're gonna have to wrap it up, sir. I've given you a lot of leeway, but you're going on and on.
So the total, the total number of trees on this property is one thousand twenty-six trees, and I will wrap it up. And, you know, given that we are, that we are all aware of the recent wildfires in California, it makes no sense to not do all of this forest management plan, you know, and asking that you change condition number one to allow for all of this forest management plan and only leave the seven trees marked for removal directly seen from the Adams yard from the property line at their deck. That is the impact to them, and I believe my architect, Michael Helm, and Carl Anderson, our registered professional forester, are online with us as well. And I would ask Carl to pick up and go on to explain the reason for doing all of this harvest, all of the forest management plan. Thank you for, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. All right. Next one is, is this Bonnie again, Public seven one zero eight? If it is, you already had your time. Are you there?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I appreciated you letting a couple people go a couple seconds more. I feel like the people that.
I let the applicant go extra. You had your time though before, Bonnie. I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on to the next caller. Thank you. The next caller is Elaine Estru.
I'm the neighbor just north and west of the Morris property across Hobson Creek. The creek is actually the boundary between our two properties, both of which are actually located on unceded ancestral territory of the Arok tribe. I request that Chairman Bongio grant me the same amount of time that my neighbor Macklin Morris was just granted, since I need to respond to a couple of his misstatements.
No, you have three minutes.
Thank you very, thank you very much. So the first misstatement was that this property that I live on with Danny Sokolski was logged, and that twenty truckloads of trees were removed. This property was devastated in the hundred-year wind event of two thousand eight, and the trees, which are Sitka spruce and highly flammable, not redwood, were removed as an abatement with, and it was permitted at that time. I wanted to make that very clear. It is a misrepresentation of Macklin Morris to characterize that as a logging operation that should excuse his proposal and validate his proposal. That is incorrect. Another incorrect statement was made in that this is a moderate fire-risk area. If Mr. Morris has been looking at the CAL FIRE map, he can see that this is a low-fire risk area. It is an area of moderate drought. I suggest that he check that out. So I'm just coming up to speed on this project, and it's a scramble. It's a complex project. A few general thoughts. My thoughts are on the well proposal and on the tree removal project. Our property came with a beautiful established garden of mostly native plants that we don't water at all. No sprinklers, no drip system, no water features. The open meadow doesn't even need watering. Raising vegetables is the only use case where irrigation is needed, and our property is drier than Macklin Morris's property. So I think that's a good data point. It's all about choosing plants carefully.
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
Understanding the reality of water in this area. The Trinidad area has serious water challenges. This is a low-fire danger area, thankfully, but living here, you learn not to take water for granted. The logging project will have a major impact on all modes of travel of Stagecoach Road. The road is used daily as a walking trail by locals and tourists. There are also bikes, and two passenger cars can barely squeeze past each other. Tell me.
Your time is up. Yeah. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Call in user four.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Michael Helm. I'm the architect for the project. I just wanted to clarify that the detached bathroom is for guest use and for use while working in the gardens. Macklin's father's ninety years old, that's why it needs to be handicap accessible. The spring box and wells, the spring box is to be used for redundant irrigation, domestic and fire safety, water storage capacity. A meeting with Chris of Fitch Well Drilling and data from the pump log of the existing well tells us that we cannot expect the new well will be a big producer. We are hoping to gather groundwater from a bench along the side of the creek and sit fill the water tanks. The spring box is a permitted use within the riparian corridor per section thirty-three point one point seven point two point three, and will be located outside the stream flow transition lines. Tree removal plan prepared by Western Timber Services has been submitted and approved by CDF and is in compliance with the county requirements. This is not a commercial timber harvest. The intent is to restore the gardens planted on this property in the early sixties through the eighties by the Humboldt State College Botanical, Botany Professor Meyer. The gardens have been overshadowed by second growth redwoods and also block adequate access for emergency and fire vehicles. All significant trees and rhododendrons are to remain. Only native plants will be installed. In response to the department's suggestion that tree removal be limited to an area between one hundred and fifty feet and three hundred feet of the habitable structures on site, the registered professional forester has stated that this would be inconsistent with the California Forest Practice rules and would substantially increase the fire danger. CAL FIRE has tentatively approved the tree removal and as proposed by the applicant. The applicant remains extremely concerned about the fire danger, having lost three homes in recent fires in Sonoma and Napa. Planning Commission should approve all the tree removal proposed under the hundred and fifty to three hundred foot CAL FIRE structure protection exemption. Thank you very much.
You have thirty seconds. Thank you. Next caller is Carl Anderson. The next guy has already been on. Go ahead, Carl.
Oh, thank you, yeah. My name is Carl Anderson, and I'm the registered professional forester who's been working with the Morises on this project proposal. I do have over forty years' experience practicing forestry, including twenty-five years as a California Registered Professional Forester. Hopefully, staff has provided you all with a copy of the thirty-four-page Macklin Morris Structure Protection Exemption project description with an amended date of January twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, and a final revision date of June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. It describes in great detail the scope and need of the fuels management project proposed. After reading staff's report and recommendations, my major concern is that staff recommends that no trees be removed that are greater than one hundred and fifty feet from the habitable structures located on the subject property. I believe in reading staff's report that the justification for this is the potential for negative impacts to the adjacent property owner to the east, primarily visual impacts. What staff may not have considered is that the visual impacts are lessened and mitigated to a level of insignificance by the partial cutting that is proposed, meaning that we're not clear-cutting, we're simply doing a thinning, by carefully selecting primarily the smaller and more suppressed intermediate trees and leaving the larger, more dominant trees that are more fire-resilient. The high level of cleanup that is required by the California Forest Practice rules, and also the additional mitigations of protection measures and restoration's measures proposed by WTS and SHN. Approval of this condition would not allow the Morises any fuels management near their east property line for varying distances of one hundred to one hundred and fifty feet. It would also preclude any fuel management in three smaller areas on the south area of the property where there is no visual concerns.
Thirty seconds, sir.
What concerns me most about the excessive buffer on the east property line is that during periods of severe fire weather in this area, weather conditions typically characterized by low relative humidity accompanied by easterly winds. And there are numerous potential ignition sources surrounding the Morises property, but especially to the east with residential development, power lines, a major highway.
Gotta wrap it up.
In my professional opinion, the level of fire protection would be significantly reduced along the eastern portion of the property if the condition was imposed, and this is the most likely approach of wildfire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller is six seven seven two zero six four. Are you there? Unmute, star six.
Can you hear?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Janet Morris, and I just want to make two comments, that the Coastal Commission has made no objections to the forest management plan, and that with CDFW, all of the recommendations have been incorporated into our plans. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other public that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment section, and I'm gonna bring this back to Okay, Thomas, you have your hand up.
That last commenter speaking truthfully that the Coastal Commission has no issues with the project, the forestry management or fuel reduction plan?
That was the applicant, I believe.
No, that was the applicant. I would not characterize the Coastal Commission's comments as having no problem with things. They have. They have consistently expressed concerns with the proposal. We have attempted to do things to address their proposals. They have never given us anything in writing that says that they're satisfied with the efforts.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other commissioners that have thoughts on this one? Go ahead Mike.
Well, I have a concern about the quote-unquote permitted well with the spring box over there near the creek bed and, um, as we've heard from numerous neighbors and as we know as Humboldt citizens, um, that there is a problem with Trinidad with water. I would like to know a little bit more about that drawing from the creek there. What has been found and what is truth and what is, um, not truth?
I will say that in response to the existing diversion, um, on page 25 of supplemental number one, the applicant has responded to this stating that the riparian water right diversion from Hobson Creek, um, it has dated back prior to 1950 and has been registered and licensed by the Water Resources Control Board. However, I have not seen any documentation supporting this in the file, um, in the application materials or in the grantee or the preliminary title report. Um, the, the LSAA that was, the draft LSAA from CDFW, it did disclose that there is an in-stream water diversion currently. However, there are no additional details mentioned. The applicant has proposed that the new spring box well would replace that in-stream diversion. And so in regards to, to what's been looked at, um, the applicant has received an LSAA from Department of Fish and Wildlife. Under that LSAA, the applicant is required to provide, um, this might also address some of the comments we received from the public, but they are required to provide copies of the water diversion records to CDFW later than December 31 of each year, beginning on the first season of the well use. The measuring devices required by the LSAA are also conditions of approval for the project and they'll be required to be installed within the flow of the diverted water and will begin as soon as the draft LSAA is finalized or the operations begin.
What number is that condition? I'm sorry, but I've got to stop you on that and just ask you that.
Yeah, let me go ahead and pull that up here. So number, item number six on the attachment one of the recommended conditions of approval of the staff report, page 22. It says that the applicant shall install and maintain water conservation and storage shed, oh, wrong one, sorry. Shall install and maintain an adequate measuring, measuring device for measuring the instantaneous and cumulative rate of diversion for the proposed new wells. Um, and so that language was directly taken from the lake and stream bed alteration agreement from CDFW.
Okay, you were saying some more, um, on the subject there. It was, it would be nice to have that conditions in the executive summary, um, just pointing it out and it helps, um, tie it back in real easy for people to see, um, as they're glancing through reports such as this.
That is noted. I believe that that was referenced. It might not have been pointed out blatantly, um, but it is in the executive summary on page six of the staff report, um, under the public comment and how we addressed that in response to the comments, the comments we received for the extraction from Hobson Creek.
So is the requirements there, um, the logging and all that, that's exactly what you were taking from CDFW? Is that again correct? I'm just trying to review and.
That is correct.
Thank you. I have some other things, but I'll let some of the other commissioners continue on with some things and I'll come back, um, with some more questions and observations. Thank you.
Brian, you were, I think, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just wanted to start by saying that I appreciate staff taking so much time. It sounds like they've really heard a lot of the public comments and tried to address them as best as possible while still balancing the stated purposes of the project. I want to go on the record and say that I support most of the projects as recommended by staff, but there's a couple of public comments, uh, in sort of a theme that concern me. Basically, I'm hearing an allegation that some of the purpose of the stated, uh, for the project is really beyond fire suppression and those purposes stated by the applicant and go towards creating a commercial activity, a botanical garden and putting in, um, additional types of plants that would require more, um, use of water beyond what would seem reasonable. And so I'm wondering if staff could speak to how appropriate it would be, uh, to add a condition stating that additional water that is brought out of these new wells wouldn't be for those purposes, uh, for creating unreasonable demands for watering, um, you know, plants that aren't native and trading botanical gardens. Is that appropriate and within our purview to do so?
It is within your purview, certainly through the chair to protect, uh, resources, particularly coastal resources. And so it would be appropriate to structure a condition to, uh, place an appropriate limit on the amount of water used and to, uh, I'm struggling with how to word that and, and how to detail that in a way that's, uh, enforceable, but something can be developed, I'm sure.
Would you feel comfortable if we were to say simply that there is a water conservation plan that's to be reviewed and approved by the director such that any new, uh, water capacity that's brought online is used for fire suppression and residential uses and not for commercial uses and extravagant uses for non-native species watering? If I gave you that sort of general language?
Yeah.
Do you feel like you understand what the concerns of the public commenters are and you could, you could get the specificity of a specific plan?
Yes, I do. I, I think what I hear you saying is that the water used on site would be used for the residents, would not be used for commercial purposes, would not be used for watering ornamental or non-native, uh, species. And, uh, really, one of the things I think I would ask you to add in is that the applicant establish a water budget for the water used on the site, for the house, uh, for other uses, fire protection purposes, and, and then for any supplemental irrigation. But the supplemental irrigation would need to be used for native establishment of native plantings.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Director, and I would be prepared to make a motion if other, uh, commissioners are on the same page as me.
Could I ask one question of staff? I'm a little bit confused about how much increased capacity of water are they creating? Because I heard two things. One, you know, pumping water and irrigating. Us that lived, lived in Humboldt County for a long periods of time don't irrigate anything. You know, I mean, I'll never water my lawn and it's green. So I'm confused. Are they, you know, the applicant says, oh, we're just replacing, you know, what's already there and so we're not going to have increased capacity of water use. Are they or aren't they? Because the structures they're building are not really high water use structures. And if they need water for fire protection, they can always put in a rainwater catchment tank just for, um, fire protection. So are they or are they not increasing their capacity of water use by putting in these two new, um, wells?
I think certainly the additional water sources provide them a higher capacity of, of water. I think they've said that the existing well is failing and that the spring box, uh, isn't as productive as they would like. If they were sufficiently productive, they would continue to use those. I think, uh, there seems to be in the discussion, um, two different divergent thoughts. One is that the applicant presented that they're really not expanding their water use, but there seems to be some understanding from some things that have been said that there are some different intended uses, um, on the site and different intended planting patterns on the site that would be more water consumptive.
Well, I think that it's easy to, you know, engineers figure out all the time how much water you need for domestic use. You know, it's just based on your bedrooms and, and that's what they need. They don't need, you know, three, four times that, you know, and they don't need to be pumping water and irrigating, you know, all their plants. That's silly. So I think that, you know, the department should determine what that, that amount is of water use. And I think you said it perfectly well, a conservation, water conservation plan, um, to limit the water. If they need to replace a failing, uh, well, then I understand that they need to put in something new, but if they're going to keep the existing one and add two more sources of water, for what purpose? You know, it's ridiculous. And it might be that, you know, when you're new to this area, you think you need more than you need, um, and we need to pare that back because I'm more concerned about that than the trees, frankly. And there have been some major historical fires through that area. It's not, you know, impervious to, to wildland fire. So, um, you know, I'm, I think you guys compromised on the trees and I can live with 150 trees, but I, I'm more concerned about this overuse of water and, um, pumping out of the creek to irrigate. That's just silly in Trinidad.
Melanie, your turn.
Uh, thank you. Yes, uh, I just wanted to say that I am in support of the project as well. I think it's important for, um, everyone to have some perspective, uh, with the project. It's in an area that has already been zoned appropriately. So we're not talking about forest conversion here, which is the source of most deforestation. Uh, that's in other areas that haven't been converted yet to where people are living. So, um, that's something I think important for maybe a lot of the callers, um, to give just a little bit of perspective. The forest management plan looks adequate. As far as the water goes, I, I agree with Commissioner O'Neill. I feel like maybe the applicants don't realize that they will need a lot less water than they think. Planting solely native vegetation is a water plan in and of itself, especially if you plant them in the autumn. They should all root and do well by the following season. I'm not sure we need a water plan, given that all of the vegetation will be native and they will soon discover that they don't need all of that water. But I'm certainly open to some ideas surrounding that.
Thomas, you have your hand up and then Noah after him.
No, I just am trying to figure out, so this project, we want to put all these extra restrictions on it and tell them they can't cut for fire reduction? Or are we okay with, uh, 300 harvesting trees with 950 to 300 feet as long as they leave those seven if we add all these water restrictions? Because I, if we were compromising, I'd be okay with that, but if it's just water restrictions, you can't cut trees, thank you for this because I am not buying any property in the coastal zone, I'll tell you that right now.
Okay, go ahead. I'm with you.
Yeah, uh, well, I, I basically just wanted to chime in and say I, I think there is a lot to, to balance in this one. And, uh, I actually feel okay about how the county came out on this, how staff came out, I think was an appropriate balance with regard to the tree, uh, with regard to the forest management. I think, I think the gist of it is that they're relying on proximity to structures, uh, to get an exemption for forest management out to, you know, to, um, out to various distances. And I think doing it out to 150 feet pretty freely, uh, is fine, but I think beyond that, I think they have to take other, uh, factors into account and, uh, and those factors include, um, the neighbors and, and the other structures and so forth. So, um, I just wanted to basically say I, I support the, the, the recommendations of staff. I would, however, be amenable to, uh, adjusting them to include a water management plan. That's all.
I'm going to speak now since there's nobody else put their hands up. I have concerns with the water. I always hear about the water problems up there, so I, I do have concerns with that, but it sounds like they, from what I read, that they're just replacing what's there and they've pretty well been addressed. My bigger concern is with the, uh, though I am concerned with the water, but I, my bigger concern is with the issue that I brought up earlier and we've got CDF and a registered professional forester who are the guys that we're always looking to for input on all our other projects. Thank God this isn't cannabis. It's the only one that's not cannabis in a long time. So, you know, that's a good thing. But we're always looking to them to, you know, for their recommendations, for their direction, and now we get their direction and we're trying to, to backpedal on it. And I shouldn't say we are, I'm saying staff is recommending that we change the, the, um, number of trees cut that they're recommending, the, the distances, um, and such. I have a problem with that. That's, you know, we look to the professionals and that's what they are. They've been trained to do it and then we don't, we don't listen to. I mean, I have concerns, I understand what the neighbors are saying, but there's also a lot of nimbyism going on right here. I mean, there's a lot of people that have their little piece of the world up there and they don't want any change happening in it. I understand that too, but this property owner has, has rights as well. And, uh, I'll, I'll see where things fall, but I, I think we should listen to the professionals and we shouldn't try and second guess what they say and because, should we do that every time when it's a cannabis project then? It would be my question. Should we question CDFW and every other agency? I mean, that's why we have all these agencies. I wish we didn't, we have all these agencies, but we do, so we should use them. All right, I'll leave it at that. So Thomas, you got your hand back up.
Going to formulate that into some sort of a motion, I, I would, uh, support, I would second your motion, just throwing that out there and see how the cards fall.
I would too, uh, especially if we added something in there in terms of, uh, water management, although again, I feel like the native vegetation is a water management plan in and of itself.
Well, if you're asking me to make a motion, I'd rather not. It's not that the chair can't. I, I don't believe it's my place though, as chair, to make the motion, so I'd rather somebody else make the motion. I heard Brian make a motion before. He did earlier. I think, I thought they were referring, they wanted me to make one. Maybe I misunderstood that.
This would be a motion that, um, basically removes some of the conditions that the staff report has laid on the project, whereas I believe Commissioner Mitchell's would be one that adds additional conditions on top of what the staff have recommended.
Why don't you go ahead and make a motion then, Melanie? She has some thoughts on it. And then see if we get a, a second and we'll go from there.
Okay. All right. All right, I'll find that the project is exempt from environmental, I'll propose that the project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to section. the project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to section 15, 301, 302, 303, and 304 of the state sequel guidelines. Make all the required files for approval of the coastal development permit and special permit based on evidence in the staff report, and adopt a resolution approving the Morris project without the recommended conditions laid out in the staff report.
You don't certainly mean all of the conditions.
The, I'll be more specific. With removal of the recommended condition, of the tree removal that is greater than 150 feet from the habitable structures on the subject property.
So, one of the things that, if I could, the applicant has asked for is to allow tree removal up to 300 feet, but, and retain seven trees visible from the neighbors deck. That is what the applicant has asked for.
Fine, that's also what the, the CDF went along, or I meant CDF, but the forester went along with. So that's, that would make--
I would change the condition number one to reflect that.
Okay.
All right, yes, all right. We'll modify that to include the seven trees that are planned to remain for purposes of privacy.
I'm sorry if I put you on the spot by pushing you to make a motion, Melanie. All right, so we have a motion there, would anybody like to second that motion?
Is there a water conservation plan in that motion? If so, I would second it.
The trouble with the water conservation plan is that I don't believe we've fully discussed what that would entail.
The director indicated that he understood what, what was being referred to, and so that would be something he would approve the details of, and would prohibit the irrigation of non-native species and botanical gardens and stuff being alleged by the neighbors. If you'd include that language, I would be happy to second it.
Okay, I have just a question for the director before I add that. How would that be enforced? You know, I can see how water itself could be enforced, but, I mean, nobody's going to be there to see whether they're taking three showers a day or watering their day lilies.
Yeah, I think what it would, through the chair, I think what it would come down to is establishing a budget upfront, a water budget upfront, to demonstrate where the water is intended to go. There is, there are a number of existing non-native plantings already existing on site. There is a really large lawn, there's a couple really large lawns on site. So it'd be a matter of allocating water, probably to maintain that, but not overwater that. And then it would be a matter of reviewing the pumping records as part of the CDFW reporting requirement, and having those reports given to the planning and billing department.
So what water budget are you proposing?
Would be asking the applicant to prepare that, so that the applicant would be declaring where they're going to use water, and then we would work with the applicant to make sure it's in line with what the commission has been expressing concerns about, and then monitoring for compliance with that.
And you, you would use guidelines for that sized home, I'm presuming? All right.
So is that, is that something that would happen after we approved, or, okay?
That's the proposal.
Okay, then I will amend my motion to include the requirement of a water management plan that will be worked out with the director. It will take the form of a water budget where the water consumption will be determined to be in line with what is standard for the square footage of the home.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to comment, usually it's based on the number of bedrooms is how they determine how much water usage you're going to need, not square footage.
Okay, I'll change it to a number of bedrooms. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So the second, okay with that?
Perfectly.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy? Mike Newman? Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes, thank you.
Motion carries five to--
That was a long one, guys. Thank you, Melanie, for making the motion, and Brian on the second.
Thank you.
Okay, we are at 9:15. You think we should start anything else, Director, or should we, probably should just take and do a motion to move these to the next, these next two items to next meeting?
I would recommend a continuance to July 15th.
Okay, so I get a motion to continue items, item number two, new singular wireless PCS special permit and PWM Incorporated conditional use permit in the Arcade area, and the Humboldt Empire Farms LLC special permit in the Garberville area to the July, did you say it was the 15th? 15th meeting, and also the zoning ordinance, I'm sorry, there was one more item, and zoning ordinance amendment, amendments to the commercial cannabis land use ordinance to that meeting. So there's three items that we didn't get to tonight to be moved to the July 15th meeting.
I would make a motion to move those three items to the meeting of July 15th.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Would the maker of the motion be willing to specify that they go in front of any items that are moved from consent on July 15th?
I'm sorry I didn't clarify that, I thought that was our new SOP starting about a month ago, so yes, that was the intent of my motion.
Good, yeah, maybe that is the standard SOP.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
No. So Laura, roll call vote, please.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Motion carries, thank you, everyone. Anybody have any, we have a couple minutes, so is there anybody have any questions for the director or anything? I have one if nobody else does. Seeing no hands going up, I would like the director to ask the supervisors when we're going to get back to having regular meetings. I keep hearing rumblings of it, and it's time. This is, this whole thing zooming is a joke. It's time to get back to real means. I miss you guys, okay? That's what it comes down to, but I'd like--
I've got a, maybe an idea for you, but you've got a hand up, I think, on this item.
Okay, Thomas, go ahead.
Didn't they just vote no in-person meetings until September 30th or something on Tuesday?
Well, I, I saw that too, but then I've heard varying reports as to if that's going to happen, so.
So maybe something, if the commission's inclined to do this, to allow me to write a memo for you to the planning commission to express your interest in seeing the planning commission able to begin to meet in person again?
Because I'm assuming you guys would all like that.
Yeah, I, I would welcome the director writing such a note to the supervisors from us.
I will commit as well, although the northern border did finally open, I will be away from July 26th till August 21st.
Good for you.
I, I would like to see that as well, Director. You know, the Eureka City Council is starting their meetings, so I don't know why the supervisors said no and are delaying it more, so it makes no sense with the direction that the state of California is going. With the directions, you know, from the public health about masking, if you've been unvaccinated, you know, the three options that are out there for going into stores, you know, volunteering that if you've been vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask, but if you want to, you can, and, you know, that drift there, so.
Yep.
So I think you've got the gist, that'd be great if you draft something that would go to them.
I'll do that.
Appreciate that.
And if there are commissioners that are not comfortable with meeting in person, that we continue a Zoom portion of the meeting as well.
Will that be able to be accomplished, I'm assuming? We'll have both.
I think we probably have the technical expertise to do that.
Gosh. All right, anything else, Director? Any thoughts?
I don't have anything right now. It's looking like the 15th meeting is going to be fairly robust.
They always are lately. All right, well, with that, I think we are adjourned. We'll see you in two weeks, everybody.
Good night.